Mentions Gatsby 68 and 75. Those are accounting pronouncements that required the college to record a liability on its books for its prorata share of the MIPSers liability. A number of years ago, the college had to record Gatsby 68, and that's the pension portion of that liability. Just in this past fiscal year, the college had to implement Gatsby 75, and that included an additional liability on its books for $42 million, which represents the healthcare portion of the MIPSers liability. The total net position in the middle includes the net position with those liabilities. So the college would have a deficit at the end of 2018 of $65.8 million. That's broken up into a couple of different categories, one being a net investment in capital assets. That's your total fixed assets, buildings, land, less the related debt. And then there's the unrestricted and unallocated portion. And so in total, it's $65.8 million. The next slide is general fund net position or equity just for the general fund. And the information on the left-hand side includes general fund excluding any of those pension or healthcare liabilities. The net position at the beginning of the year was $10.9 million in the general fund and had a net increase this year of 1.7 million. So ended the year at 12.6 million. The $1.7 million increase is slightly over the amended budgeted net increase of 1.2 Courtney's going to cover the unrestricted net position and a few more slides.
Thank you, Dana. The next slide we have here is the unrestricted net position. One way to think about this is this would be the college's unrestricted resources that are available. You'll see that on the left-hand side, we have the general fund. This again excludes the pension and OPEB liabilities that Dana mentioned. The next column is the auxiliary fund, which would be mainly the bookstore and the restaurant of the college. And then finally, a total of both of those on the right. One thing to point out here is this shows the balances from June 30th 13 through June 30th 18 and year-over-year increases for the past six years. Moving on to the next slide, we have a graph that's another way to look at the unrestricted net position for both the general fund and all funds. You'll see that in the blue, this is the unrestricted net position. This shows a significant increase in both 2017 and 2018. And then the pink color down at the bottom would be the general fund only, which excludes those pension and healthcare liabilities we mentioned and shows an increase year-over-year The next slide is a breakdown of the college's general fund revenue. So we have a pie chart here that shows the revenue, both in dollars and as a percentage of total revenue for the college. And then on the right-hand side, we also have a chart that shows the group three averages. Group three would be other comparable institutions, which would include Henry Ford, Schoolcraft, Washdona, and a few others. You'll see that those averages on the right, as they compare to the college's averages, one we wanted to point out was tuition and fees. You'll see that the college's tuition and fees are 52% of revenue as compared to the average of 42%. So this is showing that the college has a higher reliance on tuition and fees as a percentage of revenue. And conversely, you'll see that taxes are 14% for the college, whereas they're approximately 36% for the group as a whole, which shows that lower tax base that the college has. All right? The next slide is a similar breakdown of the college's general fund expenditures. On the right-hand side, we have another table that shows the group three averages and also statewide averages for all colleges. One thing to note is this data is for the prior fiscal year as it was reported. And then the pie chart on the right shows a breakdown of the expenses for the college as a total or as a percentage of total expenditures. One item that's new is information technology. You'll see that in the blue on the left, and that is not included in the prior year information for the other group three and statewide averages. Up at the top, we've also broken down administrative expenses between personnel and bad debt expense. We wanted to note that there was a significant decrease in bad debt this year, and it's down from the prior years. Okay? And then Dana's going to walk us through the slide.
This is a slide that includes general fund, total revenue, and total expenses since 2011. And you can see since 2014, the college's revenue has exceeded expenditures over the last five years and is expected to do so as well in 2019. The 2019 is based on your current budget that's been adopted by the board. So great to see that the total revenue exceeds total expenses.
That's what we had planned to cover, but happy to address any questions that the board has.
Anyone? Okay, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Once you do a good job explaining things, there are no questions. Thank you very much. Discussion items. Fall 2018 Technology Investment Fund, proposed projects. Board report 4462. Vice President Satkowski.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Chair Mead, President Cavalluna, and trustees.
Good evening.
I am Elaine Sinaski. I'm the chair of the Technology Investment Committee for the 2018-2019 school year. The Technology Investment Committee met on Friday, September 28, and there were six proposals that were brought forth to the committee for consideration. After reviewing all of the proposals, the committee is recommending the funding of four proposals, and I'd like to just briefly describe them to you for your information. The first proposal comes from Patty Little. She is our lead instructor for the accounting department, and she is requesting the purchase of 30 laptops and a storage cart for $21,023. Now Patty has changed the way accounting is taught here at Henry Ford. She's gone to a competency-based education model. So students are responsible to listen to her lectures as part of their homework, but also in the classroom. And then in the classroom, after listening to her lecture, she has the students work on some homework using those laptop computers. And what Patty has found, since she has converted over to this strategy of the competency-based education using laptops in the classroom, is that the failure rate in the accounting classes has been reduced from 33% to 10%. So our students are much more successful. And I think Patty may be walking in momentarily. I know she had a class that met until 7:30. The other beauty is that she has been able to raise the GPA of accounting students from 2.5 to 2.8. So we're asking for your approval of this project. She has found great success, and almost all of the accounting instructors have converted over to this method of teaching accounting. The second proposal I'd like to present to you, trustee Petlicoff, you gave us a good segue.
I knew it was on this.
So our automotive instructors, Chris Young, Vic Gregory, Ashley Smith, Dave Tillman, brought forth a proposal to purchase six engines, Ford engines and General Motor Engines, as well as fuel system components, drivetrain computers, that is wiring harnesses, that is my typographical mistake, and some programming equipment. And what our automotive instructors want to do is that these engines would be taken apart, modified to test different types of fuels. Then those engines would be placed on the dynometers that the automotive department has, and will check for any differences, let's say, in torque and power. What's exciting about this proposal is that the automotive instructors will be working with students, not just in the automotive program, and they have over 200 students in the automotive program right now, but working with students from the engineering, pre-engineering, and welding and manufacturing areas of the department. So this is going to allow for considerable collaboration among instructors as well as students. That project is valued at $103,000. The third project that we're asking you to support is brought on by instructors Paul Root, Jim Smith, and Hassan Namaghi, who are instructors in the science division, teaching physics and engineering. And they're asking to replace 14 laptop computers, also purchasing 14 interfaces and a charging cart for these computers. So there are approximately 1,300 students who would benefit from this effort. These are students in science and chemistry and pre-engineering classes. And the computers will allow for the measurement of acceleration, kinetic friction, momentum, the conservation of energy, as well as the computers will allow the simulation of experiments such as explosions. I don't think we want explosions done in the science building. Okay? And so that request came in at $56,000. The fourth proposal we're asking for your support was written by Kevin Dewey of our music department, and he is requesting the purchase of 20 iMac computers, two digital pianos, and two piano rigs. This project will run about $59,600. More than 200 students in the fine arts programs will benefit from this, as well as many of our community members who come in and produce music. So the current iMac computers in the music technology lab are eight years old, and as we know, technology is always changing, and we need to become more modern with technology. The two pianos will replace two aging pianos that are 20 years old, okay? And will allow students to practice piano. So I talked with Vice President Satkowski, who informed me that the Technology Investment Fund has $347,000. We are asking that you would consider funding these projects to the tune of, and that was not a play, Kevin, on your proposal, but we're asking you to support these four proposals for $239,743.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Yes. I don't really have a question for you as much as for John, and it's just a generic one, because of the dropping student enrollment, which would affect the TIF funds as well. Is this 347,000 including the fall enrollment?
Just the fall enrollment.
Yes. And nothing left over from?
It's from the fall enrollment and some leftovers.
And some leftover from, okay.
Because of spring, we don't, spring and summer, we don't.
We don't use, right, that's why I'm asking how much of this is fall enrollment and how much of this is from?
Carryover from previous years.
I have a track on the sheet that we go through.
I just want to make sure that, because it might get tighter and tighter for the next, you know, few semesters, depending on how enrollment goes. We've got great hopes for Dr. Herbst and Dr. Nealon, but, just in case, because this is taking a good chunk of what's available.
Probably in the winter, add another, we'll still have 100 and a little over 100.
A little over 100, right.
And then in the winter, we'll probably add about another 150,000.
Right.
So in the winter, we'll have about 250,000 to play with for the month.
So it's just my cautionary tale as to how we dedicate these funds, where it's going and what, you know, what has priority, I guess, and it's going to get the biggest bang for the buck.
Yes.
That's my only concern moving forward.
Yes. Vice President Satkowski provides us with that breakdown that shows us every semester how much money has been brought in through the Technology Investment Fund and how much we have spent. So this is a current balance.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Thor.
Two questions regarding the purchase of the Ford and GM engines and the other components.
Okay.
Do we approach those companies and other automotive companies about just donating the equipment since we're going to be training our students, and they wouldn't bite?
They do.
Okay.
I probably have one sitting on my desk right now for a Ford donation. We get the entire vehicle donated to us.
Okay.
And in some cases, once they're done with the vehicle, they take the motors and transmissions and engines out of them and use those specifically for training. Our agreement with Ford is you will not resell it, you will not use the parts, you will not sell the parts. So the vehicle frame itself has to go and get scrapped in its entirety. In fact, Ford will come and pick the vehicle up, do the scrapping. We then are responsible for the transmissions and the engines. And once we're done with those, we can sell those as scrap, retain the proceeds, but they cannot be sold to be used for use of.
Okay. The other question is, with the old computers and pianos, how are we recycling those?
Kevin, can I ask you to address that, or Vice President Satkowski?
I can't answer that.
Okay. To be determined?
To be determined. Yeah, somebody from ITI is going to come and pick up the computers and take them away. And so I don't know what happens to them after that.
They get turned into hot plates.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Sinaski.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was really impressed that you really knew about that.
About?
All the mechanical stuff, and you're in business.
I have to, I'm in business. I have to read all those proposals and then present to you, so I better know something.
You did very well.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Action items. First one is citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action. Do you have a blue card the secretary may speak at this time? Mr. Chair, I don't have any blue cards.
Okay, next.
Next item, special consideration of an action item. Are there any action items on this agenda which board members or the president wish to discuss and vote on separately?
I hear none.
Action to approve action items. Recommended action. Move to approve action items numbered one through five as recommended in this agenda.
Some move.
Support.
It's been moved, and it's been supported. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of this motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? It's unanimous. Next item, please.
Board of trustees business versus acknowledgements of correspondence.
Do we have anything?
I can't recall.
Okay, next item.
Board committee reports.
The audit committee just met, and we just went over the same presentation that was just presented to all of us.
Any other reports? Okay, next item.
Request for information and/or future agenda items.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Since we, I already introduced this topic, is it possible that we could, with the declining enrollment, see what departments may have lost students so that we kind of know where we maybe need to focus on? If the automotive department is booming, then maybe something else is struggling. And so we might need to be following that a little more closely.
Is, what would be an appropriate timeline for me to get that information to the board, Madam Vice Chair?
Well, I would like to make sure that, and I don't know who would be able to, and we've lost Becky, so, Laura, I don't want to put that on you, but I would say before the winter semester, if at all possible.
Absolutely. We can report to you certainly by the new year.
Trustee Lane, excuse me.
I was actually assuming that that was going to be part of the president's review of programs generally. Looks like I'm drawing a lot of blank faces, so. Is the president not reviewing programs that are succeeding or not succeeding or program statistics? I thought we had discussed this.
I am, and we are. I would be happy to go into detail about that right now if you'd like, trustee Lane.
No, I just, I thought that generally speaking, there was going to be like a rotating review of statistics, program by program. And of course, this is a little bit more urgent, but.
That's what I'm thinking, is the other might take a little bit more time to, you know, piece out. I would just like to at least have a general idea.
Madam Vice Chair, I absolutely can give you trending data for programs and enrollment in programs to whatever granular detail the board wishes. And trustee Lane, my proposal would be to show the board that data and then springboard off of that to where the board's next additional questions would be, if that suffices.
I'm assuming that would be like at a retreat or something longer term as opposed to the shorter term, but I hope that both are ongoing.
Well, I will say this, and Dr. Nealon can speak to this more, and frankly, probably will be making this presentation to the board when it is made, but the review that you're asking about is in real time all the time. And so the answer to your question is if this is ongoing, the answer is yes. In fact, Dr. Nealon and I talk about it, not to the granular detail, but to the question of programs and their health. That happens weekly.
Okay, then perhaps I'll ask you the next time that we meet in smaller groups. I'm interested in that as well.
Absolutely.
I have a couple of other issues I'd like to bring up. First is that I did call trustee Hamud, and she was called home for illness at home by her biggest baby. She did want to give my apologies. And then a question for President Cavalluna. Reviewing your update to the board, I noticed you, in the section, legal services, you gave us details generally about those, but I didn't see any RFP that might be in the works. Is that not being done, or a couple of us did ask about that?
You know, I'm glad, you know, I'm glad that you asked about that, trustee Lane, because a staff member came to me and asked me about that just today, and I frankly couldn't remember if the board had asked that that occur. And I have not had time to review the minutes to answer that question, but the fact that you're bringing it up makes me believe that it was somewhere in the minutes, whether my tenure had begun or not. But I'm happy to take direction from you, trustee Lane, or the board, if you'd like that process to start up, if you'd like me to get a public presentation from legal counsel about what that process would entail. I frankly could take some direction about how you'd like to proceed on that, knowing and recognizing that it is something you want to be engaged.
My memory can always be faulted, but as I recall, it was during the initial days of your tenure, and I don't remember what meeting it was at, but I remember bringing it up. I believe trustee Barry also reiterated my concern, and then I think trustee Hamud also was interested in it, at least at a minimum level. So I just wanted to remind you of that, just so that I can understand, I mean, since the last time that we discussed the issue, we have a couple of people who are working in legal services, then we also have outside counsel, so I'd like to know how does it all fit together in the big picture? What do we assign to whom? I mean, I know some of this, but what do we foresee cost-wise and assignment-wise? It's part of the policy committee as well, so.
Perhaps I could make a proposal and gather if the board supports it. What I think might make sense is if in the November meeting, myself or a staff member explains what the process is to engage in an RFP, what the process is to what we've done so far, and perhaps the board could give direction about whether an RFP should be triggered and solicitations under which. Unless the board wants to direct me now to engage the RFP process, and again, trustee Lane, I have to admit, I don't recall if I was given that direction before. I do know that we reported extensively on the services that were rendered by lawyers who are employees of Henry Ford College and lawyers who are not employees of Henry Ford College. But as I speak, I think maybe it's probably best I review what the minutes were, and then if I were, if I was directed to constitute an RFP, and I haven't, then I can remedy that right away.
Trustee Barry.
Correct me if I'm wrong, trustee Lane, isn't this a discussion to be had at the finance committee level first? I mean, that's the way we've done it before, if I remember right.
You know, I don't remember when it was brought up. I know.
No, no, I'm not saying when it was brought up. This is something, after you asked for it, a finance committee should have been called and given information, more information than what the board was giving.
Possibly it could have been.
Yeah, then it should, then.
As you recalled, trustee Schoolmaster brought it up at the P-12, and I know that it hasn't been reviewed here in very long time, so. Whether it goes to committee or whether it's a request on the floor, I haven't really given.
A request can come from the floor. I'm saying it would go back to the committee to review it and bring it back to the full board, or the president can bring it back to the full board.
Trustee Petlicoff.
Well, and I guess one of the bigger questions is, what kind of contract do we have in place already with the outside legal department? Because if we call for an RFP, are we violating, or is it, you know? So to move forward, I don't want to make a call without knowing what we have in place currently.
Thank you.
That's what I would imagine, this discussion should be had.
At the finance, yeah.
Before we bring it here. It is obvious that the sense of the board is that they would really like to have it investigated and some kind of a report so that they can make some kind of a judgment that makes sense. So I don't know when you would like to do that. You're pretty busy.
Well, I can make a report available to the board on the options, including some of the questions that are imposed now. I just need to know how quickly you would all, would prefer, if it can be a report given to you in the interim and then discussed at the next board meeting. I can do that. I can equip your finance committee with a briefing from myself or my staff on that point. Again, I apologize. I don't recall if this was a direction to my office and that we didn't complete it. If that's the case, and I find that that's the case, you're going to see some very quick action. If it's not the case, then I could use some direction about how you all want me to respond to your request and how quickly.
Well, it seems to me that maybe the board would agree that this would be an information base for November, so that we have enough information to proceed.
I don't even need it by November.
Yeah, I don't see urgency in this.
It's not urgent, but I know that we are paying top dollar for legal services, for outside counsel, since we're talking about measures economizing, and I do think it warrants review, so.
Well, if we're not in any hurry, can we ask for a December report?
We could ask for it even next year.
I would say January would be, as long as it's moving on.
Taking time. I have no issue with that. I just would like to know that it's going to be addressed. That's my only.
Well, obviously, it will be addressed, and if we could have some kind of report by December, I think that would be fair.
January would be fine.
Trustee Petlicoff's point of view needs to be considered. If we already have a contract, can't give you running off for an RFP, right?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can just repeat.
Yeah, you go ahead and summarize it.
What I hear is a general consensus, and that way I can make sure that I meet with the board is requesting. I will deliver to the board at a meeting of this board, a report, including the following things. The status of any contracts that we have with any professional services, i.e. law firms, and ramifications of changing those. Two, the process that is the best practice to seek proposals for legal services from ex. external entities, and how the board would go about that.
Good.
And three, I can reference the reports that I do know we made available to the board on what our legal services have been, both from, again, lawyers that are directly employed by, unless you said lawyer, that is directly employed by the Henry Ford College, and lawyers that are contracted with on the outs, external.
And their scope of work.
Yeah. And I can, I can make that a report to you by the January board meeting, and I just want to make sure that that is what you all expect of me.
That sounds good.
And can we also include, when was the last time we applied for an RFP for?
I do believe I know the answer to that, and I think the answer is never.
I think that's.
Yeah, I think we operate under a general services agreement.
That's what I thought.
But, don't, please don't take that as gospel. That's my recollection, which I'm already expressing I'm not quite positive about today. But I do think that all those, all those things I've listed are things we can have, deliver to you in advance of January, and then, at the very least, I will make it a topic of discussion at the January board meeting.
Sounds good.
A good summary, and I appreciate very much that you get the detailed information from the board so that you know what you're doing. Anybody? Yes, Trustee Elaine.
Well, thank you, President Cavalluna, for that. I did read, as a matter of fact, that the report that we were given was on cost, legal costs for the presidential search, and I did read that, so I appreciate that. I'm just not sure of the other costs. So, anyways, I'd like to thank the President also, and his family as well, for the new video. It was very nice. I watched it, and I appreciate that your family was willing to relinquish a little of their personal privacy and to tell your family stories. Very charming video. I was touched by it, so thank you for that. I'd like to also remind everyone that November 6th is the election, so everyone should be voting, hopefully, however they feel, one way or another. There's a lot of important issues on the ballot, including several propositions. Prop 1, 2, and 3, I think, are the only ones. There might be a couple of others, but just a reminder to vote. Thank you.
Last item.
Board Member Commentary.
I would like, I would like some clarification about the video that is off of the homepage with the President talking about his commitment to the, to college. I just saw it this afternoon, but I can't even recommend how you get to it.
It's linked right on the.
Is it right off the homepage?
Yeah.
And are there several clicks to get to it? One click?
One.
All right.